This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to the Harwich Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. This meeting is being held via remote participation only. Online access is available through GoToMeeting.com and may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. This is being recorded, so it will be available later. Our call to order and roll call pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. Let's take a roll call vote, if I may. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz here.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse here.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson here.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky here.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland here.
Dave Harris?
David Harris here.
Greg Chadwick?
Greg Chadwick here.
And Duncan Berry is here. We are going to start this evening with public hearings on the continuation of PB 2021-04, 7-Eleven Main Street LLC. Somil Patel, manager, seeks approval to modify site plan review special permit PB 2019-18 and PB 2020-31 relocate the fence from the southerly property line to just off the rear parking lot attaching it to the guardrail. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-55. Properties are located at 7-Eleven Main Street, MAP 41, parcel D8 in the C-V and Harwich Center overlay zoning districts. This is being continued from March 23rd. Mr. Patel, let's hear from you first, sir.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Since our last meeting, last meeting I proposed a four-foot fence, but since then I have submitted modified plans to you, to the board last week, which proposes a six-foot fence. So I have met with Peter Antonellis and his wife Susan Antonellis, and I understand their concerns, and we discussed that, you know, what are their concerns and how can we resolve it? And we have come to a conclusion that if I put up a six-foot fence, that would solve their concerns regarding screening between the properties. So that's why I have submitted new set of plans to put up a six-foot fence for doing screening between our lot and our neighbor's lot.
Thank you, sir. Has everybody in the board been able to read the reapplication as well as the letter? Any questions about that? Mr. Antonellis, thank you for your letter. Would you care to address the board?
Please. My only concern at this time is that the record, that is, the agenda, the staff report tonight, still seems to indicate that there's going to be an attachment to the six-foot fence and the guardrail. I think Mr. Patel and I agree that there really isn't a plan at this time. It is for a six-foot fence, but it's freestanding. It's not being attached to the fence. It's of no concern to me, other than I think that you want the record to reflect what, in reality, we're talking about.
Mary, do we need to adopt that as a factor in the proposed findings?
Does it show it in the plan? I don't have the plan in front of me, so I can't actually see it on my computer tonight.
All right. I'm not sure, because I see it in the plan on page nine on the PDF where it shows guardrail. I just don't, it looks as though it's attached, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Bill Stoltz. On the plan I have, it shows that the six-foot fence is not attached to the guide railing. It is on the pack-a-lot side. It's one foot away from the, from the guide.
Okay, what page of the document are you on?
I have a, I have a separate page that I, that was given to me.
Okay.
That amendment.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The materials that were distributed as the packet do include a diagram showing that the fence, the six-foot fence, is indeed not attached to the guardrail. There is, however, also a document that was included in the package materials that I think shows an attachment, which was prior meeting, maybe with the Historic District Commission, and maybe even with the Planning Board back in March. But both documents, there certainly is one that shows the six-foot fence is freestanding.
I see it now. It's actually page 11 of the PDF. It goes a one-foot separation from the guardrail, and it's dated 4/19, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming that it's correct.
Yes, it is a freestanding fence, one foot away from the guardrail.
Do you think that we require that, then? I'll go back to Mary with that question. Do we require, if this is indeed agreed on?
Yeah, we'll just add that to the conditions. You know, the, Mr. Patel, because he already got historic approval for the four-foot fence attached, he's going to have to go back to HGHC again to get approval on the six-foot fence.
Okay. Well, can we help them along on their way to this evening, then?
So we'll, yes, I will put it in, I'll add a comment in the special comment.
Great. But do we have any other comments from the public? Hearing none, and there are no more comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Why don't we proceed with a roll call vote? Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
And Duncan Berry is aye.
Or me.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to adopt the following proposed findings of fact. One, that the property is located within the CB and Harwich Center overlay district. Two, that the relocation of the fence will not impact the site or the uses on the property and may provide for better vehicle headlamp shielding for the neighboring properties at the rear. Three, the modification to the site as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Five, all conditions and provisions of cases PB 2019-18 and PB 2020-31, site plan and special permits shall continue to be observed and enforced. Six, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use structure or condition. And seven, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed with a roll call vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Mary, do we have to do your amended site plan review special permits?
Yep, so I move that we vote to approve with conditions the application and plans with 7-Eleven Main Street LLC, Somal Patel, manager, to relocate the fence from the southern property line to just off the rear parking lot. The fence shall be a six-foot fence and shall not be attached to the guardrail in accordance with the plans submitted to the Planning Board. This decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich. The conditions shall include, one, that the special permit, site plan review special permit be recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds that any plans referencing a four-foot fence or a fence being attached to the guardrail shall be amended and shall be filed prior to, with the final as-built plans. Three, that all conditions and provisions of cases PB 2019-18 and PB 2020-31, site plan special permits shall continue to be observed and enforced.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
David Harris, aye.
We'll take any one of those. We got three. Any discussion? Let's proceed with a vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you.
So, that takes care of item, Public Hearing A. Public Hearing B is PB 2021-06, Whichmere Harbor Real Estate LLC owner Andrew Singer Esquire representative has applied to amend to the site plan special permit granted in PB 2020-22 to convert 8,828 square feet of player's best natural lawn panels at the Beach Club to Sin Lawn plant-based artificial grass and to convert two approved panels of Sin Lawn totaling 1,110 square feet back to decking on the lower level. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-55, Site Plan Review and Chapter 400. Property is located at 23 Snowin Road, Unit 12, MAP 8, parcel P2-12, in the RH-3 and R-L zoning districts. Mr. Singer?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of Whichmere. We are here this evening for a minor landscape change within the pool fence area, seeking to change several areas of natural lawn to plant-based artificial grass around the concrete pool areas. This is for environmental reasons and practical reasons. The conservation commission has approved the proposal. The reason we're before you is that the town has determined that the plant-based artificial grass, even though it is permeable, does count as site coverage, so technically we are changing slightly the pre-existing non-conforming site coverage and amenities coverage at the property. So we're here before you ask for, then, the previous 2020-32 to allow this. If you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board?
Can we hear from the Assistant Town Administrator with the staff comments?
Yes, excuse me.
I'm just going to mute caller 26 here and some wrestling papers.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. The engineering department had no comments or concerns for this application. The conservation department had concerns requiring mitigation, which have been through, have been communicated to the applicant, and they're taking care of those. Health indicated that all requirements of 105 CMR, 435 shall be met, and that is the swimming pool code for enclosures. Police, fire, and highway all had no issues or concerns. Planning staff comments, no waivers are requested, and administrative requirements have generally been met. The Board of Appeals is scheduled to hear the case tomorrow.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Who was that just speaking? I'm sorry. She didn't say her name.
I'm sorry. That's, it's me. It's Megan Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator.
Thank you, Megan. I thought it was you, but I...
So do we have any questions? David Harris?
Yes, you indicated this is permeable, but the town considers it impermeable. How permeable is it? How does it compare with natural turf?
The, the quick answer is it's actually more permeable than natural turf. Dave McNevich is on the line. If you'd like some more detail, that we had submitted reports to conservation demonstrating that it is a very permeable material, but because of how it is installed, the prior town planner and the conservation agent have determined that it would be considered impervious for coverage purposes. And so we included that in the calculations.
Thank you.
Andrew, can I ask you a question?
Please, Joe.
The, the, the two towers on either end, are they already up? I was by there the other day. It looked to me like you're, you've got those going up.
If you're referring, Joe, to the construction of the Beach Grill Restaurant, then it is under construction per the permits. That was, you know, we're not seeking to amend that. That is being built as permitted. I'm assuming that's what you might be referring to.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? We hear nothing, so I'm assuming that we probably ought to see whether or not what the will of the board is and how we'd like to take action on this.
Duncan, this is Mary. I move that we vote to close the public hearing.
Craig Chadwick.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye, unanimous.
Duncan, this is Mary. I move that we vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the property is located at 23 Snowin Road and is located within the RH-3 and RL zoning district. Two, that the Conservation Commission approved the changes proposed in this application with conditions pursuant to their jurisdiction. Do we have a, a decision number from the Conservation Commission? Can I ask that?
Yes, it says they will through.
This is Andrew Singer.
I don't have that. Does Andrew have that?
I don't know if Dave does. There is a number. There is an SE number, Mary, from the state. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but it was approved and voted.
Okay. So, all right, so to clarify, number two finding of fact, the Conservation Commission approved the changes with conditions pursuant to their jurisdiction. Three, the landscaping change will not create any issues or hazards for pedestrians, vehicles, facilities, or neighborhood characteristics. And four, the Health Department stated that all requirements in 105 Code of Mass Regulations 435 at sex shall be met.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Do a roll call. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
I don't know if it makes any difference to anybody, but I'm in a room where I also have a TV on. I haven't got the, I got it muted, and the select one just came on.
We're in conflict with them tonight, Joe, so they bumped us.
Oh, I couldn't care less. I just thought people might like to know.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Mary. I move that we vote to adopt, to approve with conditions the application of PB 2021-06, Whichmere Harbor Real Estate LLC, and plan entitled Plan Showing Proposed Turf Conversion at Whichmere Beach Club, prepared by Coastal Engineering Company, David J. McNevich, PE, dated March 19th, 2021, sheet C2.2.1. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the application, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval. The following conditions are also imposed. A, all previous conditions under PB 2020-32 shall remain in full force and effect and shall be enforced. B, any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals, and any hearing may necessitate further Planning Board review. Any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals shall also be deemed a condition of this site plan review special permit. And C, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. And D, final as-built plans shall be submitted before any certificate of occupancy shall issue.
Second. David Harris, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's proceed with a vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you. Good evening.
So we now move on to the public meeting section, where new business approval, not required plans, number one, actually, number two, I believe, has been continued. We'll get to that in a moment. Item number one is PB 2021-07, Walter J. and Vonda L. Moberg, as owners and applicants, and Walter J. Moberg Jr., owner, through their representative, Ford and Ford Attorneys at Law, seek approval to reconfigure two adjoining lots following the grants of relief by the Zoning Board of Appeals and, as set forth in Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, K-GG, and more specifically, Section 81.P, approval not required. Parcels are identified as 1112 and 1110, Queen and Lane, MAP 75, Parcels S5 and S6 respectively, and are in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. Mr. Ford?
Good evening, members of the planning board. For the record, Mike Ford, representing the applicants. Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed A&R plan to reconfigure the common lot line between two long existing lots, both of which already have houses on them. The house on 1110 was built circa 1740, and the house on 1112 was built in 1916. So both of the houses predate the adoption of subdivision control in the town of Harwich. The purpose in the division was to make the lots more proportionate in terms of their area. One lot currently was 43,000 square feet, and the other lot was 20. One now will be a little over 35,000, and the other lot will be maximum 30,000. They'll both be limited to bedrooms per the Board of Health regulations. We leave the plan by virtue of the variances issued from the Zoning Board of Appeals, authorizing the new common lot line endorsed by you as an A&R plan, inasmuch as the frontage has been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Alternatively, and in addition to that, the plan is entitled to an A&R endorsement under the provisions of 81L, definition of a subdivision. This is a division of land into two of our lots, each of which has on it a existing structure that predates the adoption of subdivision control. So I think you can sign this plan under either provision, Mr. Chairman.
Correct. Anything else for us?
No staff comments, aside from the comment from the Health Department, which Mr. Ford already addressed, that they're in a zone too and must adhere to the one-bedroom-per-10,000-square-foot rule. The planning staff recommends a positive finding.
Members of the board, do we have any questions here?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mary.
Hi, Mary.
I move that we vote to endorse the Approval Not Required Plan entitled Approval Not Required, prepared by Terry A. Warner, PLS, dated September 24, 2019, and revised on March 19, 2021.
Second.
Arthur Rouse, second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, I'd like to call a roll call vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. So, the next item, I believe we have, already have a letter of a request to continue from Susan Ledoux, dated the 23rd. So do we need a motion to do the continuation, or is it just somebody passed through here?
Joe McFarland, move to continue.
Thank you, Joe.
Bill Stoltz, second.
Thank you, Bill.
Just a point of order. Can we, I know it's not technically a public hearing, but can we put a date and time on it, just to cover ourselves?
Thank you.
What, it's the will of the board, whatever you want.
What is the next meeting, the 11th?
Yes.
Didn't they specifically ask for the 11th?
They did. Their request for a continuance asked to go to May 11th.
Great.
This is Mary. I'd request that we continue.
That's what they say in their letter, by the way.
Right. Mary?
So then could I suggest we continue until May 11th, no earlier than 6:30 PM?
Thank you. We'll apply that second to your clear articulation. Any further discussion? Let's have our vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. We have one item that I know that a member of the Board would like to bring up. I'd like to open it up to this, at this time. Dave, was there something you wanted to bring up to us regarding our meetings?
No. Did you ask me that?
Well, did we not, did we not have a conversation? I mean, I'm sure, maybe I've misplaced my...
I think you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, I think that was the conversation between you and I.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, my gosh, yeah, sorry, yes. Please.
Yeah. So, this is Bill Stoltz. And I'm hoping that, I'd like the Planning Department to try to get that meetings can be held in the meeting room, whether they, you know, whether we have to call applicants in one by one instead of having them in the room at the same time with us, but they could be in the hallway and be called in. I think it would be better for the Board to do it that way, because I think you'd get a better understanding of what is being talked about, and a better view of the plans that are being shown. So, I was just hoping that we could ask the Planning Department to try to do that for us.
Am I correct, Mr. Chairman, that we now have a new Planning Director?
Effective the first of the month, is my understanding.
Why couldn't we just ask him to make that happen? I'll second that.
It's not, it's not up to them.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Greg.
Thank you, sir. Megan, are there any state or town restrictions still in effect that would prohibit that? Or can you address that? Thank you.
There are still state requirements that will, it doesn't prohibit you from meeting in person, but it does make it difficult for an open meeting, because you can't, you can't open a meeting and expect, say, 50 people to show up, and I know that's unlikely, but you have to expect a crowd, and there are restrictions on the number of people that can be in the Griffin Room. I believe that the total right now is 16 people in total. So, you could, you could think in the next couple of weeks, months, to try to have the Board meet in person, but to have the applicants and the public there may not be possible for, for a couple more months.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mary.
Is there something to say?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mary.
Mary.
Yeah, the only other concern that, I would like, I would like to get back to meeting in, in person as well, but unfortunately, when you're on a GoToMeeting app or a Zoom app, sometimes it is very difficult with the audio, when you have people in a room and people online. We had a num, there were difficulties when the Board of Selectmen were doing it, so I would just, I would just suggest that we be cautious when we're doing it, because you're not, as Megan said, everybody isn't going to be allowed to come in. You are still going to have people on public hearings that want to comment, that are going to be remote, and the nature of the GoToMeeting app will complicate it, because you're, you're not going to be able to give up that app right initially, because of the attendance restriction. So, I'd love to see it happen. I'm just a little suspect whether we can be successful in the next month or two with some of the restrictions that are still in place.
And it is difficult for Channel 18 to broadcast live at the same time as a GoToMeeting. They've run into issues with that as well, so it's not, it's not as simple as it seems.
Dave?
I think it's an excellent idea, Mary, but I agree. I don't think we could get everybody in, and then it might not be considered a public meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Dave?
Yes, I've had a number of other meetings that I've attended where they tried to do have both remote participation and a group in the meeting, and the audio is extremely difficult to control. So, I agree. Mary brought that up, and I agree.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As a, as a teacher who's had the pleasure of doing both in-person and Zoom at the same time, or whichever, I can tell you that it's, it's not the same.
So, optimal?
It's not optimal, especially with children. So, I would, I would say that we kind of, I mean, yeah, it's going to open up a can of worms if we can't have enough of the public in there, but just by two seconds.
My thought is that I think we've had an example of how a GoToMeeting event challenges our ability to manage the public's interface with the Board, and that resulted in a lawsuit, you know, the, what we're looking at with what was in the new front page newspaper this week. I think that would have been handled a lot differently if we could have actually used the gavel, for instance, kind of a procedure, and managed expectations better, but it's very difficult to corral people in this, so, I mean, I understand both sides of this. And it looks like we're, the Governor's plan is talked about, last I saw was 100% back to standard operating procedures in public facilities in the beginning of August. Am I correct in that, Megan?
That is.
We may be able to layer it in before then, depending upon, if we can manage and estimate properly who's going to be attending. If we have a very thin meeting like tonight, obviously, we won't have anywhere near 16 people. So, maybe it's something we can just dip our toe in the water and see how it goes.
Mr. Chairman, Arthur Rouse?
Yes, Arthur.
Would it be feasible to have any meetings? I know it's still, weather-wise, it's still difficult, but any chance of having anything outdoors? I know other cities and towns have done that.
I think that might pose some production problems for Channel 18, but...
The annual meeting is going to be outdoors.
The Hillmont Beach is gorgeous. We can all sit out on the jetty. Well, I think we take that under advisement, Bill. I'm completely sympathetic to the idea. I think we all are. I think there, we probably face some practical and technical issues, and we will monitor this as we go along. And I think that's also important, as the new Town Planner comes into office, I guess, next week. I'm hoping to get on the schedule and have a conversation about just such, such concerns. So, definitely hear you. Any other discussion on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question, that maybe somebody else in the Board can answer for me. Is this gentleman who's been appointed as the Town Planner, has he appeared before our Board in years past?
Yes.
If anybody, if anybody knows.
He has, Joe.
This is Mary. He was the member, he was the representative from the Cape Cod Commission that presented to us when we first started talking about the DCPC in West Howard.
I thought I remembered that, Mary. Thank you.
He actually came in and spoke to us.
Okay, let's go on to our minutes. We have March 9th and March 23rd. Megan, did you raise, I'm sorry.
Yep, you skipped over three, the Continued Hearing for Zoning Article Parking Setbacks.
Yep, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, we have a Continued Hearing for Zoning Article Parking Setback in the MRL and MRL-1 zoning districts. Please note, the following article has not been accepted by the Selectmen for the May Town Meeting warrant. The notice is attached. It reads Article X, see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Howard's zoning by amending section 325-42.L by making the following changing. New text shown in bold, underline, and deleted language shown in strikeout. Parking and loading zone setbacks for all uses except single-family, two-family, and single-family with accessory apartment shall be as follows. For commercial structures, wheel stops or parking spaces perpendicular to or at an angle to a structure shall be located so as to provide a clear area of three feet between the end of the vehicle parked in the space and the nearest structure. Sorry about that, Megan. Do we have any discussion here?
Can we, can we vote on this before they put it on the warrant?
That's a good...
It's not going on the warrant.
Say again, Mary, please.
It's not going to be on this warrant, Joe?
Yep.
They voted not to go forward with it.
So, why, why are we approving it?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz.
Hi, Bill.
Why don't we postpone this until we can finally get a meeting within the meeting room, so we can discuss it more, more clearly, and let the public have their say, too.
I would support that.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Through you, to the Assistant Town Administrator, would it make sense for us to postpone this to our first meeting in August, perhaps? Because, assuming that we might actually have an in-person meeting by then?
I would suggest you continue it to the first meeting in August. That's your earliest possible date. You'd be able to discuss this with a public audience.
I'm thinking so that we don't have to re-advertise and do all of that rigmarole again.
Sure.
Do we know, do we know what that date is?
Let me see.
Move, move to, move it to August 10th. Move the article to August 10th.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. I have a second. Greg, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wondered that August is so, still so iffy, and the logistics of pulling everything together, if there's no critical time factors around this, which it sounds like there isn't until the next annual town meet, unless there's going to be a fall town meeting, but until the, the next town meeting next May, I don't understand if, that there would be any great rush to, to put this on the agenda. So, might we be better off doing it later or early in, what is it, 2022, in anticipation of going on the warrant then? That way, it kind of gives us a little buffer in case August decision there, and as Mary said, having to advertise it again, and so on and so forth, unless I'm missing something, and then there is some time sensitivity to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mary, was there an issue about the advertising on this?
I have to look at this statute, Duncan. I haven't looked at the statute in a very long time with what the, with what the timing is on approval. This is one that was referred, that we referred to, to the Selectmen, and under the standard procedures, we would have to hold a public hearing for a zoning bylaw change, so, you know, it's kind of standard operating procedure for us, so, just making a suggestion based on some of the comments from the colleagues.
Wondering whether we should put it, let's say, a mid-July meeting. I'm wondering if we could put it on the agenda for a mid-July meeting to discuss the feasibility of what we're looking at in August, and if there's a sense of urgency about it, we can then bring it up in August.
If you don't continue a public meeting to a date, time, and date certain, then you have to re-advertise, so you probably want to re-advertise anyway, but that's just, that's the point.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not married to the date, whatever the will of the Board is.
Thank you, Joe. Megan, did you have something?
I was just going to offer the dates in July. You have July 13th or the 27th?
I'd prefer the 27th.
Lucky 27, as opposed to lucky 13.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. The only thing about that, if we're at the end of July and we're going to look to have a public meeting with people attending in the Griffin Room on the first meeting of August, I don't know if that gives us a two-week notice to, to publicize, and I guess, I should have asked it as a question, does anyone know if there is a time sensitivity to this item?
Yeah, that's the question. I think the, let me just double-check on one item here, because I believe that in the filing deadline for an August 10th meeting is July 6th, which means that we should have our discussion on June 22nd, if we want to basically have a August meeting, right? An August discussion. So, my guess is that we should bring it up in the July, the June 22nd meeting, so that it can be advertised by July 6th, which would then put it on the ballot or on the schedule for August 10th. Does that sound reasonable?
And you'll do all this by putting it on the agenda at the appropriate date?
That's the idea.
Fine with me.
Put it on the agenda on June 22nd, which gives us the time necessary for a filing deadline of July 6th, which then enables us to cover our bases for the first open public meeting on August 10th, which is still in theory. So, it gives us the chance, at least, it, basically, two months from now, to revisit the trajectory of, you know, the pathway back toward normal, and it still gives us a couple of weeks to work within that schedule. I would think that that would be a reasonable approach towards scheduling it, and it would also be a reasonable test case for what I would assume to be probably more urgent cases as the summer wears on, where there will be concerns. I also have a question for Mary with regard to the, the scheduling and what's, what we can expect as a Board, as blowback from the suit that was enjoined by Mr. Winstead and Company. Is this something that will occupy our Board in the fall going forward?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect it to. I think, Megan, through you to Megan, Megan, I assume that's all gone to, to council, insurance council, and they're representing us at this point?
The public records request went to council as well as the lawsuit, so yes, everything's in the hands of council.
Okay.
I would expect we'll hear when we need to hear, and sometimes these things get decided and go away, and sometimes they go on for quite a long time, so there's really no way to tell.
Okay.
I, I'm just, I'm just upset about our past history of dealing with that particular applicant. I'll let it go at that.
I think we'll find that, we'll know what happens as it happens, and, you know, from my perspective, as long as we're being represented by council, then, then we're good, and the applicant, the applicant at the Royal, I'm sure, can proceed at his own, at their own risk, and pending any court decisions, so.
Right.
By the way, I was by there today. They've got a fence all the way around it. They're going to go forward.
Well, they have a fence around it, Joe, but I, I, they haven't come to historic yet, so they should have done that already. So, just as an FYI, historic brought it up last week, so, they'll be, they'll be getting a letter from the Historic Commission soon.
Okay, before we get too far away from this, could we get a motion to dispose of item number three here on the Continued Zoning Article?
I have a motion by Joe McFarland. We just need a second, and then a roll call.
I'll second it.
Can we rem... Can we remind our, what that motion is? Get it on the first meeting in August?
Sure, to continue the meeting, um, to discuss in June, on the June 22nd meeting, no earlier than 6:30.
Excellent. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Greg?
Point of clarification, please. Um, so I thought what we had just talked about was meeting in June to discuss logistics, for lack of a better word, of when we might plan to, um, reschedule the actual public meeting. Sounds now like what we're asking, or what the, the proposal is, to continue the actual public meeting to June. And I don't think that's what we wanted to do. It sounds to me, Duncan, like what you suggested is the June meeting would be, for us as a board, not, not a public meeting to hear the merits or not of this zoning bylaw change, but to discuss, okay, are we going to go forward in August and hold the public meeting? So I think it's important, if that's, if I understood correctly, and that's what your intent is, that we need to have the language correctly reflect that.
I intended the latter. Somebody wants to amend it to make sure it, it, it does that. I, I have no problem.
Great.
I have no pride of authorship.
Can we have it so amended? And seconded? I believe we already have the second on that.
Can I just pipe in for a second here, Duncan? The, the reason to have a motion in this instance, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, because I have been and can be. To me, the only reason to have a motion is to postpone your public, is to continue your public hearing, your existing public hearing to a date and time certain. If the board doesn't want to take any action on this tonight, you don't have to take any action on it. It's, the only reason you would take a motion is to, so you are still in a public hearing and that you're not, you know, not having to re-advertise and go through the, the whole procedure all over again, which, again, you may have to do. I don't know the timing, but, but-
Right.
I don't, you need to take a motion if you don't want to.
Excellent.
I can with, if, I can withdraw my motion if that's the will of the board.
Megan, do you disagree with me?
No, I, I agree. I was going to, to interject and say, we do need, if we are continuing or postponing, you need to give it a date certain. If you don't want to give it a date certain now, you, you don't have to take a vote. You probably want to re-advertise this as a public meeting if you're going to do it again in August anyway. So then it will just be a brand-new hearing.
So I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Well, let's just make sure that we get this on the agenda at some point in July so we can revisit it and advertise in a timely manner.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, so now we can, uh, discuss the minutes of the March 9th to 23rd meetings?
Mr. Chairman, I would- The March 23rd, 2021 minutes, and place them on file.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ready for a roll call vote? Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. We have advisory opinions from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, how would we like to dispose of these? We have essentially two and a half pages, or one and a half pages roughly, of one, four, eight, nine, 10, it looks like, 10 cases that are coming up for the April 28th meeting, uh, at 7 o'clock. Um, should we read these into the record, or is it simply the-
No. Duncan, this is Mary. You don't need to. This is only if the board wishes to comment on any of these matters. And once before it's all-
It's just a notice.
If there's anything else that you'd want to comment.
Yeah, it's just a notice, that's all.
Right. So it seems to me that we, one, at one of our meetings, we read some of these aloud, and I just didn't want to do it if it was unnecessary. Thank you very much. And so that takes us to old business. Do we have any old business?
Got some old members, but not old business.
Uh, any briefings or reports by board members? I know there's been a lot of, uh, activity at CPC, it looks like, Mary.
Um, I can say, yes, CPC had its, uh, acquitted lengthy meeting last week. Uh, it was really updates on status for all of the outstanding, um, matters. The, um, matters are pretty much ready to go forward for town meeting on, uh, the 8th. So, um, there's quite a lot of, uh, money up in the air for some significant CPC projects. The, um, so I would encourage everyone to attend town meeting and, and cast your votes. Um, other than that, you know, CPC will, will, uh, we've seen the articles, and the articles are already placed on the, on the town meeting warrant, so. If anyone has more points on individual applications, they're all on, online on the CPC website.
Great.
Mary, don't, don't we usually, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mary, don't we, don't we usually have like a brief meeting prior to the annual town meeting?
We do, and I was actually going to mention that, Joe. Um, Megan, we typically post a planning board meeting for town meeting, um, so that we convene just before town meeting and, uh, are in a full public meeting so that we can meet if we need to, to discuss anything during town meeting. So I'm just delighted to throw that out there, make sure that that's going to get posted for the 8th.
Yes, I, I talked to Elaine about that today. Um, other boards are meeting that morning as well, and their meeting posting just says 75 Oak Street, the football field, and some will say the end zone, some will say, um, the bleachers. So if you want to decide on a place to meet, just so you're all aware of where that is, we'll post that on the public, on the meeting notice.
50-yard line.
50.
I heard that.
Okay, we'll post it for the 50-yard line.
Great. Are we presenting anything that we need to be concerned about this time?
Uh, yes, there is that one zoning article for the design guidelines.
Right, no, but I mean, there's no other kind of review of the board's activities or anything like it, uh, okay.
No, just the Finance Committee is, is offering a report.
Okay. Any other business? I will entertain to discern if we are so, you know, such an opinion or so-minded.
So moved.
Second.
I get it.
We'll call vote. Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you all.
Now I can get out of the hot stove and get something to eat.
There you go.
Enjoy, Joe.